Okay, we're ready, I think. You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's call the June 19 meeting of the zoning commission of Simsbury to order. We have a full commission here tonight, so we have no alternates to appoint. Before we start, I'd like to make a comment on the request that was made to add something to the agenda. And I think staff has some comments that...
Yes. The commission, which should have an email is forwarded to you, requests to comment on a solar project to be added to your agenda tonight. That application, it's not a live application. And normally, if we were going to have comments on an application, you'd ask the applicant to come and do a presentation and then have it explained to the board. It would be not appropriate for the commission, especially the fact that you did not notice the applicant that this subject matter would be discussed at the meeting. So I would, staff would not recommend adding that as a just discussion point for this evening.
Okay. Comments from the commission members? Are you in agreement with staff's recommendation?
Yeah, it wasn't noticed, so that's the problem.
Are there other venues?
The company has scheduled a public meeting this Thursday coming up. It's been noticed, it's been publicized with neighbors or any interested party, so there are other avenues that individuals interested in this part, this application have. And just a reminder, should this application actually be filed with the zoning council, it would be exempt from local regulations. So you would play more of an advisory role than a regulatory role once that process starts. And if it does, that we, staff could ask the applicant to come before this commission to present something so that you can be informed of what is going on and voice some concerns from, as the zoning commission, it's part of the town.
And that would be noticed? And that would be on our...
That would be on a regular agenda item, when and if that occurs. Because that's the other thing, this is not an application that's been filed. You know, they could tomorrow walk from the project.
And at that point, could there be a public hearing?
From the zoning council process standpoint, the town can...
I mean, if it came on our agenda...
It is exempt from your regulations. So you will not have a chance to regulate it, nor will you have a public hearing on that. The zoning council could, at the request of the town or others, have a public hearing on the matter. But once again, that becomes, it's a state permitting process. It's a little unique in the sense that it's not a local activity that would be regulated by this board.
Right. We may get asked by the selectmen to look at it.
Okay.
But it's really out of our jurisdiction.
It's clear, being asked by citizens of the town to look into it all.
Right.
And I believe that's totally true, that statement that you don't have...
Yes, but it has to be according to our powers.
Process.
So, we will skip that. We have approval of the minutes of June 5.
Very unfortunate. Very unfortunate.
No, they're good.
Anyway, okay, the members are adopted, as submitted. Next is a public hearing. Mr. Secretary, can you read the call for a public hearing?
Oh, application seventeen dash twenty-three of Howard Spargo, Spargo Construction Agency, Shadow Brook Farms LLC owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C. dot nine of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 27 Shadow Brook Map B-06, Block 203, Lot 103, Zone R-160.
Is there someone here to...
I didn't hear.
Okay.
I didn't wait.
All right.
Where would you like me?
Right up here, if you would, please. There's a microphone there, which would be useful to use, I think. And somewhere, there's a camera. But now we have cameras everywhere, so we don't know what cameras is actually live here. There aren't red lights on them, so... Anyway, please proceed.
So, we have an existing four-car garage that's attached to the property. It has separate entrances off the patio, unattached to the house, so that you can enter the room without accessing the home. And the homeowners who have recently purchased the property have a desire to finish the room above the garage for a future apartment for their daughter who suffers from autism. They want the ability to give her some independence in living alone, but under a very close, watchful eye. So finishing the space over the garage, they want to put a kitchen in, they want to put a bedroom in, and we've gotten approval from the building department to finish the space. But there was a condition from zoning that said, "It reads like a bedroom, it feels like a bedroom, you can't use it as a bedroom, you cannot put a kitchen in." So the homeowner said, "We would like to do what's necessary to be able to do that on the record." We filed the application, we submitted the information that was requested with the application, and then I received a letter from Michael, and I have some packages that have the pictures, a very simplified floor plan of the two exterior doors and the access to the room over the garage, as well as an affidavit from the homeowners stating that they'll be using the space and living in the space, and they have no intentions of renting it out or using the property as a rental property.
Okay.
Who would like the packages? Mike took my seventh one there, it's only six.
We can share.
Yeah.
We'll share.
And just quick for the record, I also requested documentation for approval. The building department had that approved.
Okay. Jackie?
I think we have the same question that we do a lot of times in this situation, which is, I understand that they signed something saying that this will be owner occupied, but as we know, this transfers with the house, so it...
Under your regulations, the time of the transfer, because this is a special permit which will be filed with the land records should it be approved, the new owners are required to file the same affidavit and acknowledgement statement that the structure will be owner occupied. You could require, as a condition of approval, that their affidavit, that they're going to live there and not rent it, be filed in addition to the standard notice of grant that's filed on the record, the land records. So then, should someone do a title search down the road, they're going to see special exception, notice of grant, affidavit saying, "Live here." I mean, they will be told multiple times, "This is not a two-family rental unit. This is an accessory dwelling unit, which under the regs requires the owner occupies the property." A suggestion, maybe? I mean, you have...
Well, the regs say that one of the units has to be owner occupied now, so...
Can we, but do our regs say that we can say you can't rent it?
I would, I don't know.
Because we've never brought that...
No, I'm sorry, let me just rephrase what I said. What I meant was that it's like an investment property where they live, they're absentee landlord, and they don't live at the property, either in the apartment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is not what they're, they're very specific, it's for family member living, et cetera, at the site, not an income generating move. And therefore, even though, let's say that they build this, in five years, the Glidden family moves to Simsbury and purchases the house. If, as I suggested, it's required on your regs already, I would be, I have to refile the notice. You have maybe the affidavit that was submitted tonight, required that that be filed on the land records. There'll be multiple flags that are on the land records that say, "Owner occupied, owner occupied."
Right, but another owner could rent the accessory unit.
Yeah, they can rent the accessory unit.
Yeah, okay. I just misunderstood you there.
Right. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's me, that's my...
Yeah, no, that should be clear. I mean, it's, I know that when that was adopted by the zoning commission, that the idea was you could not expect somebody to put thousands and thousands of dollars in expansion and then sell the property and have to tear it out. It doesn't make sense. So, that's why it's the way it is. Kevin, you got any questions for that?
No.
Donna, any other questions?
Yes, yes.
The Reg office.
Would you like a copy of my regs? Because it has the whole period there.
That has, one or the other of the units has to be owner occupied. That's what the reg says.
Where's the garage?
Okay. Just, because the review criteria, we should go down it really.
Right.
It qualifies under the maximum size.
Correct.
Occupancy, we know that one of the units must be occupied by the owner. Entrances, it shall have separate entrances, and you said it does.
Yes.
Does it also have an entrance from the house?
Yes.
Can you just explain this a little bit?
Sure. It's confusing, isn't it?
I'm not getting it.
There's a lot of doors in a small space, so...
Where's the garage?
The garage is right here.
Oh, it's in front, it's a space in front.
So, the entry patio doors are on the back of the house, so when you're looking...
That's these.
Yep, those two doors are right here. And then, if you're looking at this corner, looking this way at this wall, this is the door to the garage, which is right here, and this is the door that goes up to the room.
What is this?
It's just a big, open foyer area.
Oh, okay.
Almost like an oversized mudroom.
So which is the space, the living room will be in?
It's up above.
Okay, so you didn't give us a layout for that?
Well, this is the layout.
We have it.
That's in the original...
This is just how you get to it. So the garage is this way, which is what I wasn't getting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No additional driveways. Parking, there should be at least one off-street parking space, and we've got that.
Yeah, there's, if you look at the, if you look at the GIS map, there's actually a driveway that goes past the garage and then opens up into what looks like a road cul-de-sac.
Yep.
That at one point was a helicopter pad. Because at one point, one of the owners of the house was flown in by a helicopter, till somebody higher up on the hill said, "That's a little too much noise, one o'clock in the morning." So, I don't know who, but they put an end to that. But there's tons of parking.
vaguely remember that.
Yeah. I mean, if you'd like to do a flyover, you could drop down and walk around, take the town helicopter, wouldn't be a problem.
So what else do we have?
Water and sewer. So you've got the...
We've received the approval from the health district.
Okay. And then the continuation is upon sale. The new owners will file within thirty days of the transfer of property a notice of the land use stating whether the new owners intend to continue the accessory dwelling. Okay, so, based on that, we actually meet the standards?
Yeah. You could add that additional safeguard of having that, like I said, the affidavit be required that to be filed on the land records, and that would give two notices on the land records that, like I said, not keep repeating it.
Have we ever done that before?
Not that I know of.
No. But if it's a concern of the commission, I'm just thinking of other ways to...
Well, we haven't done it, but we're also in the middle of rewriting our regs, so, well, you know, we'll do that. True.
Then you have eight standards.
The eight standards? What do we have? Let's go through those.
The need for the proposed use is in the proposed location as described, so we have to say whether we agree with the need.
Right.
Relevant recommendations contained in the most recently adopted plan of conservation, which was, the existing and future general character of the neighborhood in which the use is to be located, and whether the proposed use will adversely affect the neighboring, the neighborhood character.
There's no neighbor.
Pretty far away.
The house sits on thirty-five acres by itself, so you can't see it from Westledge. And then when you drive down the private road, you still can't see the house. So, I don't think it would...
Less than land there.
Well, we haven't had public input yet, but...
Okay. Now there might be neighbors. The impact of any of the proposed use of the desirable height and bulk of the building in relation to other structures in the vicinity, the impact, if any, on the traffic circulation within the site, including the amount, location, access to parking, traffic volume, or possible circulation problems on existing streets, the need, if any, for additional landscaping and buffering between the abutting or dissimilar uses, proof of adequate availability of water and sewage disposal, and additional safeguards needed, if any, to protect adjacent property holders in the neighborhood in general from detriment.
Yeah, so I think...
Thanks, Mike.
Most of those...
Okay. So, if you have questions.
Okay. Does anybody in the commission have further questions or comments? Does anyone in the public want to speak to this application? Yes, sir?
For the record, I'm Richard Schoenhardt, Seven Pasture Lane West, Simsbury, and I'm here to support this application. I am in favor of accessory apartments. I think that they serve a public good, and I think that the regulations that are part of the zoning commission regulations are worthy of support. I think that if an applicant comes before you and meets the very specific criteria, and they, it is specific and it's extensive, I think that you have an obligation to uphold your regulation and approve it. And I think that's irrespective of the neighborhood that it's in. This application tonight happens to be in West Simsbury, that's my neighborhood, but nowhere in the, in your ordinance or your regulations does it refer to distinctions between neighborhoods, so I don't think that should ever be a factor in your consideration. So I'm here simply to support this application and support the concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this application? Hearing none? Shall we close the application? Shall we close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing for application seventeen dash twenty-three.
Seconded by Mike Doyle. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Six, nothing. We close the public hearing. Hold business. Application seventeen sixteen, we have a little loose end to tie up. We need a motion to set the effective date of that text amendment to June 23, 2017, which we admitted last time in our haste to get out of here.
Since I made that last motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that regarding application seventeen sixteen, which was approved at our meeting on June 5, 2017, that we amend that approval to include an effective date of June 23, 2017.
I second it.
Seconded by Mike. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. Okay, we have application seventeen twenty-three of Howard Spargo, which we just had the presentation. Anybody have some comments or questions here? Seems like it's a pretty straightforward application. Do we, a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application seventeen twenty-three of Howard Spargo, Spargo Construction Agent, Shadow Brook Farms LLC owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C dot nine of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 27 Shadow Brook Map B-06, Block 203, Lot 103, Zone R-160.
Second?
Seconded by Donna. Further comments on that?
Just, are we going to suggest as part of the approval that they file it or not file it?
I don't know. We can talk about that. We, our regulations require it, so I don't know. Just means adding, this is a redundant thing.
It would just be an added, an added layer if the commission's concerned with the potential of the sale of the property becoming a two-family.
Well, this special exception goes on the land records, so...
We either approve this and we not add layers, or we don't, in my humble opinion.
Right.
There are so many layers that we add on our citizens that if I can be in favor of not adding another layer, I would be so.
Okay. Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie unanimously. New business. We have application seventeen twenty-five for the Berkshire Bank.
John Remzi, Graphic Impact Signs, representing my client Berkshire Bank, who is finally taking the steps to move into that beautiful building. Just to give you just a brief history of it, Berkshire Bank has undergone a new logo and identity change, needed to implement that on this location. This is going to be a prototypical location with a lot of new technology on the inside of the branch, and so with that, this is going to be the first ground-up location with this. So, it's taken a while for them to get to this point. What we're doing tonight with our application is we've applied for, in front of the design review board, signage on the building. This is going to be reverse halo illuminated signage on one elevation. We have their logo on two other elevations, again, reverse halo lit signage. This is all within code. There was an amendment with the design review board application in that our LED illuminated lane signs at the drive-thru were proposed to be LED illuminated. We have amended that to be just non-illuminated aluminum panels that will mimic that of the clearance sign, which is a gray background with white lines. So it's just a straightforward signage package within code.
That was a suggestion from...
From the design review. He's correct, because the internally lit signs obviously are prohibited on the regs. So, that was an option in order to put the lane identifications...
And a halo is not internally lit?
Reverse, reverse lit halo is the only accepted lighting, be it up or external. So, unless they're doing goosenecks in the building, the reverse halo is allowed under the regs.
Any staff recommendations on this?
With the modification that the LED ITM lane signs, E and F, be changed to match the clearance sign, staff is in favor, which is sign G on the sign package, staff is in favor of this application.
Comments from the commission? Any other questions?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Seems too straightforward. Okay, I have a motion to approve. Somebody want to make that?
Is there a condition on it? What were the condition of the...
That the line, the lane signage for the ATM, which is identified as signs E and F, I believe, on exhibit five, be changed to match the design of sign G, that's the drive-through clearance sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with Mr. Glidden's comments.
How does that work if it's a fixed end? How do they do it?
We digitally have a secretary.
What we're going to do is, the LED lane signs were designed to be ITM open-closed
or ATM open-closed. Now that it can't be illuminated, it will just be ATM slash ITM lane. It's that simple. We won't be able to say whether it's open or closed. They'll have to drive up to the machine and determine at that point whether it's something that they can do a transaction.
So was the other ones in town...
Either...
In violation?
Either violation or existing, non-conforming.
Yeah.
We'd have to look into that.
Okay, we have a motion, we didn't have a second. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Donna will second. Any further comments about the change we're about to cut from the application? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Carrie, six, nothing.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, application seventeen twenty-six.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm here representing the Hoffmans and the LLC which owns the bank building. They're delighted that it's finally going to be occupied. In the past, we had a completed site plan, and the structure has handsomely proved that, but we never went forward with the full landscape plan, although it had been prepared long ago. We submitted that because the staff said we should have a fully approved site plan, and we agree with them. The site plan that we have submitted was a site plan that was prepared and discussed long ago with town staff, but in present discussions up to today, the staff feels that in addition to the foundation plantings and the plantings that are shown on that plan, several should be changed out, which the boxwoods should be substituted with the arborvitae or something screening the dumpster, and some of these should be, should be firmed up. But in addition to that, staff felt that there should be four to eight deciduous trees on the site, on the perimeter locations, in an area that suits the property but doesn't block important views, and have some shrubs on the property. And the applicant agrees with that, and we'd like, we very much like this to be approved tonight, subject to language that I think Mr. Glidden has for you.
That's correct. This is ball up. The applicant, this, this application was filed for the landscaping plan on Thursday of last week. Jamie met with the applicant this evening, and we discussed some concerns that staff had with the submission. And TJ kind of really summed it up, but what it boils down to is adding some four to eight deciduous trees along with understory to the landscaping plan along the frontage of Route 44, Bushy Hill, and the western boundary with McDonald's. The other is addressing the screening around the dumpster enclosure. There's a conflict of what was, what's out there versus what's approved, and really there, there's like a third that would be more appropriate. Have those details added to a site plan. And lastly, because Design Review actually sent you a favorable approval this evening, asked that the new signage be shown, that any freestanding signs be shown on the site plan, because you have proposed, but they kind of changed a little. site plan, because you have proposed, but they kind of changed a little. There's just one thing to know, and maybe the applicant can explain the stone wall that may, you may come back for in the future. TJ?
I'm, I did tell Design Review Board, as I think I've told this board before, there was always been a hope and a plan that there could be a, a stone wall around, in an arc around the point of the corner, which would express the Simsbury border and the, and the uses in the site, including Hoffman, McDonald's, and Berkshire Bank. And I just told the Design Review Board that we, we're going to work on that design with town staff, and if we get a good design, we will be back for that. But that's not part of this application, and this application is not contingent on that in any way. Just wanted to warn you.
Okay.
Okay.
Just quick to clarify, just the history, if the commission recalls, the application received site plan approval for the current structure. However, in the decision by the zoning commission, the zoning commission said that you have to come back for a site, a site plan approval for the landscaping and signs. So that's, they're following through, just not in the, maybe the same timeframe that the commission initially expected.
Yeah, but the, the site's been built out for three years, so we're fully legally non-career.
Anything we can do to get it closer to occupancy would be great.
So is there a plan that has the deciduous trees on it?
No.
That's what, so what, what I'm suggesting, if the commission's comfortable with this, I can read language that just drafted in the middle of the Design Review Board meeting, is that you would basically authorize staff to approve that landscaping plan revisions. And it would be the, the four to eight deciduous trees, an understory, like I said, along the frontage of Route forty-four, Bushy Hill, and the western boundary with McDonald's, and the screening around the dumpster enclosure.
If you recall, this was a very difficult site to work because it had a hundred feet of open macadam onto Bushy Hill and Route forty-four. Town had a high, high desire to remove those, and we negotiated a significant, in a significant manner, the interior circulation with McDonald's. The location of those trees is going to take some finesse, and Mr. Rabbit suggested that we do it in the field like we do, like he does many times on a project like this, but they got to be very precisely located so that they don't abrogate any of our responsibility to McDonald's and everybody else as we work that out.
But your, your client has no problem?
No, we're going to work with Jamie to get that done.
Okay. You fine with that?
Move this thing along.
Mike, you get this one open. Looked at that blank wall, wondering. Okay. Can we have a motion? Do you have a motion for us?
I apologize, I have a handwritten one.
Okay.
Sure.
If Jerry wants to read it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item seventeen dash twenty-six, site plan amendment, subject to the following conditions. One, applicant provides landscaping plan for issuance of a zoning permit to be reviewed and approved by the planning director with the following changes. One, four.
Four to eight.
Four to eight deciduous trees, plus underlie.
Understory.
Understory along Route forty-four and Bushy Hill road frontage. And two, appropriate screening around the dumpster enclosure.
Just the, I forget, the western, western border with McDonald's.
Oh, you did. Appropriate screening around the dumpster enclosure on the western frontage to McDonald's.
Second.
Further discussion, editing? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, nothing to Carrie's. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a live motion. It was implied.
Yeah.
Okay, the next application. Mr. Doyle and I.
We refuse myself.
We are members of the PAC board, so we'll let Kevin take over.
Do they need to appoint Tom? Or do they have a quorum without?
One, two.
Three, four.
They have a quorum without.
Quorum without.
You have a quorum without appointing the alternate. We recommend that you probably appoint the alternate.
Okay.
So you have five.
You have to come back, you know.
I left my computer. Do we stay in the room?
I was eyeing it already.
Well, absent our two, two members, we appoint Tom temporarily for this item for Mike Doyle.
And our applicant here?
Mark Demming, agent for the Town of Simsbury, owner of the site plan amendment for the construction of the ticket booth at the Performing Arts Center on the property located at twenty-two Iron Horse Boulevard. So I think you have before you the site plan and the, the elevation of the ticket booth design.
Can you clarify the actual location? Or is it in the parking lot that's there now? So still to the south of this is still the playground?
This is Iron Horse Boulevard. That's north. That's south. This is the entrance to the Performing Arts Center. This is the little round flower garden, okay? This is the playground. The old, I should say, ticket booth that's currently there is situated right here. This ticket booth is going to be located right here, has to be set back because of the setbacks around Iron Horse Boulevard. It will actually take up four parking spaces, essentially, and it'll have a way in from here as well off the bike path. So a little, that little red rectangle is going to be essentially a ticket booth.
Are, are people going to be then lining up potentially into the other parking spaces? Or is there?
Well, most people come down the bike path into here.
And how do you park on?
Remember, this is closed off during concerts. You're not allowed to come in here. No cars are allowed to come in here, except those who have permission to come in the other way and get preferred parking over here. So essentially, there's no cars come in or out during the concert. This is all closed off. So it's pedestrian traffic. Once they come to the ticket booth, then they can either come in through here, or through here, or on the back over here. Everybody follow it? Any questions?
Actually, we don't have the structure in here.
You should have it in your, sorry, in twelve.
I have the structure here if you want to see it in addition.
Yeah, so the.
We got it online.
Yeah. There it is. Okay, thank you. So all of the windows are on the Iron Horse Boulevard side?
Yeah, the, instead of four windows, these face west or face Iron Horse Boulevard. This faces south, has a door. So remember, the long part of the building, sixteen feet, faces Iron Horse. South will have the entry door, and north will have two windows here. On the east side, facing the parking, not parking lots, facing the, I should say, the Performing Arts Center, there's only going to be one small window, physically, to look out over the parking lots.
All right, we don't have an elevation on that side, so it's just a plain wall?
Yep, it's a six, yeah.
Now, the, the two windows on the north side, they're not ticket windows then?
These would be ticket windows. These are going to be designated as the ADA ticket windows. These will be height, slightly lower to accommodate, and we will have, if you look at your site plan, you'll see that concrete will come out over six feet, which gives you the turnaround for a wheelchair, although most people buy their tickets online. Or they don't even come in through this entrance, they come in through the back entrance where they have preferred parking. But if they should, these two tickets, windows, will be on the north side, sort of facing the, looking up towards the, the field, and these will be designated as the ADA. Whereas these windows will be a little bit higher. These will be in compliance, I think it's, I think you need a minimum, minimum height, maximum height of thirty-six feet, thirty-six inches, where these are going to be forty-two inches.
So is there a concrete pad all the way around it?
All the way around.
But, but leading into it is just.
On the front, on the side. This would be the north, west, south. So you'll have concrete here, all the way around here, and if you look at your site plan, you'll see coming off the bike path, you will have access, and then from the parking lot, you will have handicap access coming up from the parking lot up to the north side ticket windows.
There's a curb. Why the change in location? Why is it here and not where the ticket booth is now?
The garden club would not permit us to put a permanent structure there. And we came to an agreement that this was a preferable location.
So is there grass around the concrete pad? Because there's a new curb, right? Where you took out the parking? There's this new curb.
Yeah, so what's in here?
What's in here?
So this is the existing curbing. This will be a new curb cut.
Yeah.
These four parking spaces will be for handicapped, and they'll be able to come up here, up through here to the front of the ticket booth.
And here's the concrete.
Correct.
What is this surface?
This surface back here is going to be retaining wall about three feet high.
Yeah.
And this will be retaining wall all the way around. So this essentially, you'll be looking at a wall about that high.
But what's, but what's on the ground?
That'll be grass.
Grass, and this is grass.
That's probably going to be grass and shrubbery.
And that's what it is.
And that's all shrubbery right now.
Did this also go to Design Review?
This did. This received a favorable recommendation from Design Review. The only wrinkle from the zoning side is that under the center code and regs, you're supposed to put a public informational sign out ten days prior to the meeting date.
Yeah.
He did not, the applicant did not fulfill that requirement.
Because they didn't know.
But the sign is up now. From, from a procedural standpoint, staff would recommend that you table this for your July meeting, but in fairness to the applicant, we ask that if you have any concerns on this application, to voice them now. Otherwise, you know, you just, you can just vote on this at your next meeting. There's, you could act on this this evening without that public informational sign. Just know that that's a technical error should it be approved if someone were to appeal the actions of the board.
Yeah, but by how many days was he off?
Uh, okay.
Nine?
Nine.
Yeah.
Oh, that's honest.
No, yeah, it's.
Should turn it upside down and make it a six.
This is way far from the wetlands, right?
Yes. You're, you're greater than a hundred feet from the wetlands.
Any other questions on design?
Anybody else on the board? No, that's good. Looks like we have someone from the public here would like to speak.
I'm on the PAC board too, and my understanding from Jamie was that we didn't.
Wait, do she need to state her name?
Oh, sorry.
For the record, sorry.
For the record.
Thank you.
Linda Scofield, three Ryan Circle. Because there isn't a public hearing, because I guess, Mark understands this better than I do, but I don't think we, Jamie indicated to us we didn't need to.
It's, it's under the center code and regs, unfortunately. We ran into this with several administrative applications, and maybe it's something the commission could discuss later, but under your center code and regs, you treat, so you have public, public hearing applications that require public notice, et cetera, that's in the, in the zoning regs, too. The administrative portion requires the same standard of public informational signage as the public hearing regulations do. There's a little conflict too, because it refers to the zoning regulations for the timeframe, which only says for public hearings, but because the regs says you got to put it up, this, the conservative opinion would be, is that you got to put it up. But as I stated, it does not stop the commission from acting on it. Just know that, that, that's a potential technical error out there. It is the commission's decision.
Are you building when? After the season?
Well, we're not building anything until we get through here.
I know.
We would certainly hope to be able to bring it down, around within the next thirty-six days.
So the two weeks, if we delay this for our next meeting, it doesn't delay your construction?
Your next, your next meeting is July seventeenth, because of July four. So it's going to be delayed him thirty days. But in the meantime, they can submit to the building department and get a building permit review, at least as they wait, and also coordinate with Kevin, the fire marshal, so all those administrative reviews are done. So then the seventeenth is just a vote. Unless there's some issues that the commission has, I mean, you wouldn't have to do a presentation at the seventeenth.
We also have to go back to board selecting after, after this.
So in that case, then it would move everything out thirty days plus.
Well, you have to know what other stuff is. Right, exactly. I mean, it sounds like there's administrative stuff that needs to be done in the, in the meantime, anyway.
It, it does, and I don't know if that's, is that pending approval from the zoning commission?
Is there anything them not having approval that would change, or is that what they have to get done, other than the type of like?
The building, building department view? No, they could, they could start building department review tomorrow. Henry would, would work with you on that for building plans, et cetera. So, I mean, I don't see that being a, is something that if, if this were to continue to the seventeenth, that was not a, a major setback in the sense that I would call Henry to take that push immediately for that.
So if they got everything done, they could start construction July eighteenth, if we approved it July seventeenth.
If you had to go back to the board of selecting, it would be the following Monday, so it'd be July twenty-fifth.
So we're, that's five or six weeks out. But you're still, how many weeks out? Because you still have to go to our marshal and the building department, right?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying they could start those reviews.
Right, give them the process.
In the process as they're waiting.
But those aren't going to be done tomorrow, is what he's saying. Jerry's saying that can go.
They wouldn't be done any.
Parallel.
That can go parallel right now. Otherwise, yeah, normally would be, if you didn't do that and you waited for your approvals, that could be an added, up to thirty days for the building, the building official to review, under statute. Henry's usually pretty good at turning things around, though, in a timely manner.
Is there any air conditioning in this?
We will have a through-the-wall air conditioning that's proposed right now.
Yeah, but.
No, because it's seasonal. No plumbing.
All right, do we have a motion and to table this till our, or can we just do that?
I'd recommend if you could, a table to do it by motion.
Okay, we have a motion and table here till our, which, which is the date?
July seventeenth.
July seventeenth.
I'll make a motion to table application seventeen dash twenty-seven of Mark Demming, agent of Town of Simsbury, owner of the site plan amendment for the construction of the ticket booth at the Performing Arts Center on the property located at twenty-two Iron Horse Boulevard, assessors map H zero-nine, block two-two-six, lot zero-zero-three-A, assessors map H zero-nine, block two-two-six, lot zero-zero-four, until our next meeting, which is July seventeenth at seven PM, and this.
And second, Jerry seconds. Any all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's just technical. It looks like they got the okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Which one of us has to decommission our alternate?
Chairman.
Which chairman?
The chairman.
Oh, the chairman, okay. Well, I guess we reseat the, the regular members of the commission.
All right. We're back.
We're now going to table.
We tabled it? Okay. Application seventeen twenty-eight of Hayana and Paul Boutin, or Boutin. First special exception pursuant to.
This is just a set of public hearing.
Oh, this is a set of public hearing.
Just accepting. Do we need to read this? Or no?
No, it's just a set of public hearing. Just to set the public hearing.
Did I know that we set the, regarding application seventeen twenty- Yeah, just accepting. Do we need to read this, or no?
No.
Just a set of public hearing.
Just to set the public hearing.
Motion to...
Did I know that we set the, regarding application 1728 of Diana and Paul Booten, Booten, that we set the public hearing date for July 17th, 2017 at 7:00 PM in this meeting?
Well, second it? Is anybody Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Seems nothing cares. Application 1729 of Sheldon Crosby.
Norrie, who's speaking?
You want to tell us about it?
Sure.
Yeah, I think it'll start there. DJ, Sheldon Crosby, personal work architecture, and Wes Hartford. We're here tonight for 532 Hot Meadow. Asian Vistro, Meadow Asian Cuisine. I think you're all familiar with it. I guess I hope so.
Well, the drawings that we received were, to me anyway, a little confusing, and it would be interesting to hear exactly what you're doing.
Sure. Before I get to that, if I can just take a moment to introduce Nord Christensen, who I'm sure you all know. Nord is the owner of the property. The owner of the business, Sam Lynn, is, as you can imagine, busy.
Yep.
So Sam is there. What we would like to do is add a bar, roughly 489 square feet of a bar adjacent to the little bump out that was created a couple of years ago for a walk-in cooler. So it'd be just south of that, sitting next to it. And in doing so, we would extend the existing porch out over the patio on the south side and extend the entry. Which was that simple. So I'm starting with this diagram, which is a site plan put together by the consultants. The 489 square feet that we're adding equates to three additional parking spaces that are required. We are overpart in the entire complex, so the three additional spaces seems to fall within our surplus of parking. And we're, this area here, this is Hot Meadows Street and this little bump right there.
Can I just throw in a little... Nord Christensen, can I just throw in a little history there too, that you probably all know? Sam has been there 10 years, got a great business, really want to keep him there. Complex is full, I need to keep it full, especially with this 10% tax increase coming down from the state. Sam did these renovations 10 years ago. What he's trying to do is come up with the times a little bit, expand his bar, expand his sushi bar. You know, put a little bit of a new face on what he, what he already has that's, that's working. That's the goal.
So this is a diagram blown up. I still don't know if you can see it. Sometimes get really close, but this is his restaurant here. This is his dining room. His karate sushi bar is back in here. He wants to pull that out front where the existing bar is, the liquor bar, and build an addition right through here. This is his cooler now. Build an addition here for a liquor bar.
So what's right there now? Is that the entrance?
It's part of the patio.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay.
Part of the patio.
I was just trying to picture it.
Yeah, is the alternate we approved this?
Yeah.
I'm going to jump to this board just for a moment, so you can get yourself away. Too far away, but the top right is photographic building. And so you can see, and so what we're looking to do, his entry is here. We're looking to put a little gable on it and put the bar here and keep the outdoor dining there.
Can you show that?
Can you do that again?
Can you just do it again?
Yes, absolutely. So currently, the entry is here, where this blue sign is. So we're going to put a little gable there. We'll pull all of this roof out and put the bar here, and the outdoor dining will stay there. So I can make that a little more clear.
So he'll lose a little bit of outdoor dining, but it looks like he's proposing doors or something open to it.
It opens now, right?
Yeah.
And so this, this is...
The bump out.
The bump out now, and so we'll just pull those doors forward. We'll put this little triangle with the roof here, and then this will be the outdoor dining. So this is the, the little walk-in cooler. So this is his bar, or this is part of the dining, we'll just pull that out. We'll build a new roof all the way across, and we'll have this, this entry there as a center.
To the left of entries, the patio tables are lost then?
That's correct, yeah. So we would essentially trade outdoor space for an indoor space.
Yeah. So the parking doesn't change.
Our total numbers we're adding with, with the bar and the reconfiguration of the sushi, we're only adding nine seats in the restaurant, including outdoor spaces, outdoor seats as well. So it's, it's negligible rise in seating. But it's the kind of seating that he's, he's going to get, which is bar seating. You've all been there, and it's...
Tight.
It's very tight, and the entry, it's very confusing. There's, there's no great way to get to the bar. He's there. You see the owner, he's trying to go somewhere else. How about getting here without getting caught?
Part of, part of the issue we had was when he was so busy, he had waiting lists, there was no place for anybody to wait. So they're standing in the entrance, waiting to get seated. So what he's trying to do is create an area where they can go sit, have a drink, not mind waiting 20, 15, 20 minutes to get in to sit down. They can eat at the bar if they want. It just...
Makes sense.
Makes it a little more universal.
And just to confirm, you said any additional parking? There's plenty.
The square has, is over in park, parking. As a whole, and it's treated, what's that?
Certain times.
Right, right, certain places, certain...
Other times of the day, it's not so much... Yes. Where's parking? Not desirable.
Well, certain parts, no, certain times of day, yes. And certain businesses are open different.
Yeah, it doesn't so much affect, you know?
And it's partly that we're full too. We have been at 100% since 2001.
Yay.
And so stay that way.
So did this design review, uh...
They reviewed this this evening. And had a favorable recommendation. The only condition they had on this was they authorized staff to handle. There's an existing roof-mounted sign for the Rhino Roofing. That will have to come down, since they're going to change the roof. What we discussed with the applicant is their options are, that are available on, on placing that sign. Also, if you look at his landscaping on the plan, it's on the floor. So this, this sign is attached to the roof on the left hand, kind of where Sheldon's pencil is right there. It's going to be blocked out to begin with by the landscaping.
Right.
So he's going to have to relocate it, never mind the fact, from a zoning standpoint, on whether it's conforming or not. So we discussed other options similar to what Remax was exploring down the road. So we, staff's recommendation, if you were to act in a favorable motion this evening on this application, is authorize staff in handling the relocation of the sign for Rhino Roofing. It should not involve an increase of size. We're just taking blade sign up here, same size, moving it down here. If it's a substantial change, it would come back to this commission, because it's part of a unified sign plan.
And the, the sign for Meadow is the same?
Meadow sign is, is very similar to the Rhino...
Yeah, it's a roof sign right now. It will not be.
We intend to take that down and put essentially the same, the same script and, and sign language. It says Meadow and then Asian Cuisine is underneath, and put it on the gable entry here.
So now it's attached to the wall versus attached to the roof?
So it's not a separate sign board? It's actually right on the building?
Moment, it's on the building. And if somebody said, oh, you got to use the old sign, and we can figure out it's blue. The colors aren't working as well as I had hoped. So I wouldn't have picked blue if it were my sign.
I think that looks better than the...
This? This is a nicer sign.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. It's an improvement.
About the bicycle seller, they seem to be having an issue with their signage. Because they had to put a sign on the temporary, on the freezer building.
It's a whole separate issue.
They decided when we did the addition that somehow that blocked their sign. If you stand all the way to the south and look up the complex, yes, it does. If you look at from the front of the building, it does not. But they wanted something that said entrance here. They felt that was, and I said, that's okay with me, but I don't know if they asked you guys or not.
No, we don't have permission for that sign.
No, they do not.
But it's on this building. That's quite relative.
And Nord has been...
I suggested to...
Go ahead.
I called Mike, I actually didn't call Mike. I called Walter, the manager out here in Simsbury, and suggested that he come down and see Mike and get a temporary permit for that sign as a, as a banner or whatever, however that's treated.
Right, and he has not, but that's not, that's, that is an administrative issue that we can handle with when, should this be approved with issuance of a zoning permit? We'll have to reside, resolve that issue out there with Walter. And worst case is that if Walter wants something more permanent, which is what we would suggest, he would be back before this commission to modify the unified sign plan, along with going to design review. So design review would then look at it from a realistic standpoint and see whether it's appropriate from an architectural standpoint, never mind from a zoning code standpoint to have the signage on that facade of the building.
Okay, my note, my note here says that staff is still reviewing this.
We, well, design review, we, we received this Wednesday, Thursday of last week. We have been working with the applicant on this, and it had, it does have a favorable recommendation from the design review board. It is the commission's decision if you want to act on this tonight, or you want to wait until your July meeting.
So we could act on it and then just ask staff to...
I mean, there's the...
Relocation of the sign for Rhino.
Yeah.
I'd be in favor of acting on it.
Donna?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine.
Kevin?
Right?
Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve application 17-29 of Sheldon Crosby, agent, Nord E. Christensen, manager, EAY Properties LLC, owner for a site plan amendment for modifications to the existing Meadow Asian Restaurant on the property located at 532 Hot Meadows Street. Assessors map G12 block 132 lot 027, zone B2.
A second.
Second by Jerry.
Do we add authorization of staff, did you?
No. We were just suing the application.
But it, doesn't that need to be part of the motion?
Yeah, if you want, if you want to authorize us to handle...
Can I amend that?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to amend that, application of 17-29, for approval to staff to relocate the sign for Rhino Roofing. Can you resecond it?
I'll resecond it.
Thank you.
I think we're all, any other comments?
Thank you.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Kerry, 6-0, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Norrie, it's funny, I ain't carrying on a knife. And I said, you know, that bump out looks fine, and it's always bothered me. I remember we approved it, and I didn't know how, oh, we ate there, and I was just thinking the other night when I was standing there waiting to go in, how the bump out just kind of stuck out in front of the golden wall. So it's a bit...
This will tie it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that, that was a key because...
Oh, I remember. He needed the rest of the cooler. But like I said, I was there, and it just doesn't look right, it's sticking out, so it's...
You tried, but there's only, there's only so much you can do.
I think it's very...
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Do we have anything from staff?
Uh, just that we are working on the zoning, right, update. We have a revision from Glenn. I know that Jamie was working on that and the laws, uh, moratorium on regulations. We just, staff workload right now is a little busy.
Good, make motion to adjourn?
Uh, move or adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. Kerry, thank you guys.